Oh, it's gonna sound like bingo. You know what I'm going on? You know when you can hear them roll the ball? You can hear them like roll the ball, you know? That's what it sounds like. Are this gonna be like a real thing, like? Are the same people talking?
I call the May Second 2017 Meeting of the Youth City Council to order. We have Pastor David Pelkey here to give the invocation.
Quick and all bow our heads for a word of prayer. Thank you Father God for all the plans that are before us today. Thank you for the prosperity of our city. We look to you for wisdom and guidance with all the decisions today and that your voice will speak to our city council as they face all the complexities of running our city. Please watch over our first responders. Please bless all those who run departments and hold positions of authority. May they do it with a spirit of excellence and be an example of good leadership. Please watch over our city with your hand of protection and mercy. May Broken Arrow be known as a city of peace and unity. We want to keep you first and commit everything we discuss here tonight to your will. In the name of your son, the everlasting Father and Prince of Peace. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. May I have the roll call please?
McKinney?
Here.
Insminger?
Here.
Domriki? Not here. Crockett?
Here.
Please join Councilor Insminger in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everybody please stand. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed? May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote please?
McKinney?
Yes.
Insminger?
Yes.
Dom? Crockett?
Yes.
There were no items removed from the consent agenda. The next item is public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, awards, and oaths. We have a presentation by Ms. Lauren Myers of the Broken Arrow Chamber of Commerce regarding the upcoming annual Rooster Days Parade.
Hello, thank you for having me. I just wanted to extend an invitation to the citizens of Broken Arrow to the eighty-sixth Annual Rooster Days Festival. It is May eleventh through fourteenth at Central Park with a parade on the thirteenth down Main Street starting at ten AM. The festival is the oldest running festival in Oklahoma and it has carnival rides, food vendors, marketplace inside and out, wine garden, and all kinds of fun things that all the citizens of Broken Arrow should experience. So, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you Ms. Myers. We encourage everybody to attend the Rooster Days Parade. The next item is the citizens' opportunity to address the council. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the council?
Yes Mayor, we have one person who has signed up. Would you approach the podium and state your name and address for the record please?
Hello, my name is Nettie Potts and I live at two forty-two Twig Street. And I'm here today to talk to you all about something very important to all my neighbors and it regards our health and well-being. I happen to be president of the Apple Grove Dog Walking Club and we actually have eighteen members and we're growing. And we walk around our neighborhood quite regularly, myself and little Toodles and all the rest of the dogs. And so, what we have is just a herd of dogs and eighteen women and we get to the, I guess the problem that I need to talk to you about is the lack of sidewalks. So between cider lane and Appleseed Avenue, there's no sidewalks there at all. So you can imagine on a rainy day like we've had these last few days what a herd of dogs can do to your carpet. So what I'd like to ask the council is would you consider putting us on the list to install sidewalks, oh, and repair any that are kind of bumpy for our group and for the health of our neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a staff member who would like to respond?
Currently, our city ordinances provide for sidewalks on Main Street, Thoroff Fays on Street. However, sidewalks within neighborhoods where they exist are usually installed by the developer and are the responsibility of the homeowners thereafter. But if you have a homeowner association, you could work to collect funding for a sidewalk installation.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Coates, will you direct Ms. Potts, the city's administrative liaison, to the homeowners association in her neighborhood?
Yes Mayor, Ms. Potts, if you'll please see me after council, I'll give you the contact information.
I thank you very much for hearing my issue today.
Next is general council business. Item nine A, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the Museum Broken Arrow 2017 Pioneer Dinner Grant Request in the amount of five thousand dollars for marketing and advertising costs. I believe our Director of Tourism, Ms. Allison Cloud, will be presenting this item.
Yes, thank you Mayor. The Museum Broken Arrow will host the 2017 Annual Pioneer Dinner Saturday, May thirteenth, 2017, at Broken Arrow High School. The Pioneer Dinner is an event held each year during Rooster Days to allow Broken Arrow citizens to gather, share a meal, and tell their stories related to Broken Arrow history. Many of the Broken Arrow school classes plan their reunion around Rooster Days to include the Pioneer Dinner as part of... itinerary. The Museum Broken Arrow partners with the Broken Arrow Public Schools Alumni Association to coordinate the event. The Broken Arrow convention and Visitors Bureau supported this event for the first time in 2015 with a grant. Grant funding for the 2017 event will be used to help offset the cost of marketing and advertising costs of the event. With Rooster Days not taking place over Mother's Day weekend as has been typical, increased advertising for this event is needed. The event is expected to draw approximately three hundred and fifty attendees. The event does not have potential to generate overnight accommodations.
Do I hear a motion for nine A?
I make a motion to approve item nine A.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? May I have a roll call vote please?
McKinney?
Yes.
Insminger?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Next item is nine B, public hearing, consideration, and possible action regarding PUD 2017 and BAZ 2017 greenacre tract on the southwest corner of Orlando Drive and Evergreen Terrace. We have the city planner, Ms. Zoe Brooks, to make the presentation.
Yes, thank you. There is a planned unit development of PUD 2017 that is one hundred and fifty-seven point eight-four acres and BAZ twenty-seven fifty-three with eighty acres. That involves undeveloped and unplanted land located on the southwest corner of Orlando Drive and Evergreen Terrace. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning on eighty acres of this property from A1 agricultural to IL industrial light and include the entire one hundred and fifty-seven acres in PUD 2017. BACP three fifty-seven, a request to change the comprehensive plan designation on seventy-seven acres associated with this PUD and rezoning request from level three to level six, was approved by the city council on February seventh, 2017, subject to plating and a PUD submitted that is similar in context to the draft PUD submitted with BACP three fifty-seven. A portion of the north part of the property associated with BACP three fifty-seven was rezoned CH or commercial heavy via BAZ thirty-two that was approved by the city council on September fifth, 2006, subject to plating. The property associated with BAZ thirty-two was never platted, therefore the zoning remains agricultural. According to the applicant, about halfway between Orlando Drive and the southern boundary of the property associated with PUD 2017 and BAZ twenty-seven fifty-three is the location of a former landfill leased by the city of Broken Arrow. In addition, this area was used for strip coal mining operations in the nineteen-tens and later in the nineteen-thirties. Environmental impacts to the site and adjacent properties as a result of the past strip mining operations include elevated metals concentration in both on and adjacent off-site soils. After mining operations were terminated, the property was utilized as a landfill by the city of Broken Arrow. This area, as well as the entire site, is regulated by the Department of Environmental Quality, the DEQ, and will require approval from DEQ before any developmental activities occur on the site. These requirements are addressed in PUD 2017. PUD 2017 is for one hundred and fifty-seven point eight-four acres and divides the property into seven tracts, tracks A through G. A cul-de-sac type street is proposed to be constructed in a north-south direction through the center of the property. Tract A, which is located on the southeast corner of Orlando Drive and the proposed street, will be developed in accordance with the development regulations of the CH District, except that a twenty-foot wide landscape area will be provided along Orlando Drive and freestanding signs will be the same as those on the Ted's Horse Trailers property to the west. Tracks C, D, E, and F, which are near the center of the property, will be developed in accordance with the development regulations of the industrial light district, except as follows. Approval from DEQ is required prior to any developmental occurring on the property. Permitted uses are limited to mini-storage, RV storage, storage yard, office warehouse or warehouse, utility facility, minor, general industrial service, and light assembly. Tract B, which is the environmentally sensitive parcel next to Orlando Drive, is regulated by DEQ and will require DEQ approval for any development activity on the property. This area will be left in its native state. Vincing and signage requirements have been added to PUD 2017 as per city council comments on the draft PUD submitted with BACP three fifty-seven. The IL zoning being contemplated by the applicant is in accordance with the comprehensive plan in level six, provided it is done as part of a PUD. Based on the comprehensive plan, location of the property, the environmental issues associated with the property and the surrounding land uses, staff recommends that PUD 2017 and BAZ twenty-seven fifty-three be approved to change the zoning on the property to IL and PUD 2017, subject to the property being platted. We have the developer, Mr. John McHoney, to give us details.
Madam Mayor, members of the council?
Let's put a good tie. Thank you.
I'm John McHoney and I'm the developer of this property. And my address is two-two-oh, South First Street here in Broken Arrow. And I'm here looking for your support to change the zoning on this property from agricultural to, no, agricultural to light industrial. Because what I like to do for this property is to develop mini-storage units on most of this site. Because my demographic analysis of this area shows there is this need and I'd like to fill this with affordable storage units. If I'd like to do that for tracks C, E, F, and G, I'd like to keep track A, as the zoning mentioned for, there it is, the CH. Because right now, my plan is to put a chicken facility on that site and I would like to keep track D undeveloped at this time because there's a nice stand of trees down there and I'd like to keep that. So I urge your support in this change of zoning quest and may I be available to answer any of your questions?
I now call for a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter?
Yes Mayor, there are two citizens here who have signed up to speak. Would you approach the podium and state your name and address for the record please?
Counsel, I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you all this evening. I, my name is Joey Griffith and come to find out I live nearby this zoning change. And I come before you all today because changing from agricultural to light industry is a big deal to me. I'd like to tell you today, you know, that I appreciate the fact that we have developers who have an enthusiasm and desire to grow the city of Broken Arrow. I truly believe it's a great city. However, I come before you today because I want to tell you all and express my sincere, you know, sincerity today that agricultural means a lot to me and my family. And the growth that light industry may provide to the city, I want to share how the growth of agricultural really helps families as well in the city of Broken Arrow and as well as outskirts of the city. There's three things today that I'd like you all to grab a hold of as we talk about growth or say development. And those three words today would be jobs, growth, and development. Jobs that the agricultural produces. And the cattle industry just alone, there's many industries in the agricultural. One of them that I'd like to produce today is cattle industry. There's buyers and there's sellers and the cell barns that we use to buy and sell cattle. Within the cell barn itself, you have administrative staff. You have buyers and you have sellers. You have cowboys. You have auctioneers. You have owners and you have operators. Most oftentimes in cell barns and the agricultural business, you'll have cafes. And the cafe itself, it has jobs that it provides. It provides owner and operator. It provides a cashier. It provides a waitress or a waiter. It provides a busboy. And then itself, in that industry alone, you know, it provides many jobs in the industry of even restaurants. When we look at growth, I'd like to think about the plot that's up for grabs today or maybe that we're protesting against the change is approximately one hundred and fifty acres. And when we look at one hundred and fifty acres, a fella can raise close to probably a fifty head of cattle, of mama cows, if we're averaging about three acres per head. And if we talk about mama cows, we talk about pair. And when we talk about mama cows and when we talk about pairs, I want you all to think about growth as far as income because that's what we want, is jobs. It's what jobs produces, is income. It produces income, produces a stable home life. A stable home life produces a safe neighborhood. A safe neighborhood produces good adults. When we look at just approximately one hundred and fifty head of mama cows, which produces fifty calves, oftentimes you can even have twins, we're looking at approximately thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifteen and fifty dollars annually. That's just on that plot alone. That's just on one hundred and fifty acres. A good cattlemen has cattle spread about on different plots of land and it all depends on how lush that grass is. Well, it's a good thing we're only on second point at three. I'd also like to tell you that we have jobs, we have growth and development. You know, cattle business and farming business, agricultural produces, grows developing characteristics in families as far as responsibility, hard work, execution, and follow-through. Like John Wayne used to say, grit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. May we now have our next speaker? Please state your name and address for this record.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wood and I live at four-on-one West Kennedy in the Orange Grove South Phase Two subdivision. My concerns today are not about cows, mama cows, or anything like that, but I am concerned about the storage facility that Mr. McHoney is proposing for that area because I am concerned about the traffic that's going through there. And the streets already are narrow and it's only two lanes so traffic really builds up in that area. So I would like to know what the city plans to do about widening those areas.
Do we have a staff member who would like to address this?
The streets are on the master plan and they are planned to be widened in approximately five years.
Well, I might be moved away by then. The other thing is the chickens. What if his chickens escape? They're gonna be all over the neighborhood. This is a really nice subdivision and I do have concerns about that. I also have concerns about this area that was a landfill at one time and is this gonna run off into my yard?
Do we have a staff member who would like to address this?
The property is going to be industrial so chickens will not be allowed and DEQ is running tests on the property right now to test those things.
Okay, good. Well, I thank you very much for your time and thank you.
Thank you for your concern. Do I hear a motion for nine B?
I have a question first. So how much would the chicken farm cost the city?
Um, council? Do we have any discussion? No, continue, I'm sorry. How much would the chicken coop cost? Oh, I think that's a question for our developer.
Yes.
Well, I wasn't planning on raising chickens on that site. That was gonna be zone CH. We're gonna sell them. We need more chicken places. Nope, we weren't gonna raise chickens there if that was your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? If there's no discussion, do I hear a motion for nine B?
I move to approve item nine B.
I second that move.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote please?
McKinney?
Yes.
Insminger?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
The next item is consideration, discussion, and possible approval of two-hundred-and-nineteen Clearwater Drive Flowing Water Subdivision as a dilapidated structure and a public nuisance. Code Enforcement Officer Ms. Megan Skates will give us some background on this item.
Thank you Mayor. The residential structure located at two-one-nine Clearwater Drive has been vacant for the last nine years. During this time, it has fallen into a state of decay and ruin and has become a nuisance. The porch soffit is rotted and missing boards and the roof has rot, decay, and holes. Along with tree damage, the foundation is crumbling, shifting, and the outside is partially boarded. The interior is easily accessible through a rear door which has been damaged through illegal entry by vagrants and juveniles. The interior has fallen ceilings, broken glass from unsecured windows, unsanitary bathroom with filth and feces, holes in the exterior walls, and debris. The property itself has tall weeds, fallen tree leaves, and a detached shed that is dilapidated as well. As such, this structure is not repairable and is not habitable. Staff recommends the city council declare this structure and property dilapidated and a public nuisance and that it would be beneficial for the public's wealth, health, safety, and welfare to have this property demolished. We have the property owner with us tonight Mayor and they wish to address the council.
Hello. My name is Teresa Trout. I own this property, my husband and I do. He's not here today because he's been sick. But, you know, you say that this is dilapidated and, you know, I saw the pictures. People that did that are the vagrants and the teenagers that have broken in there. If the police department was doing their job and kept the vagrants out of there and enforced the curfew on these teenagers, that would have been a nice house. But they've trashed this house and now it's my responsibility to clean it up. Now, as far as the weeds and things are concerned, I'm sorry, but, you know, I live near the dog walker's, the dog walker lady and she and her troop of eighteen dogs come through there. They keep pooping all over the yard. I can't get out there to clean that thing up because there's poop all over it. They don't clean up after themselves on certain properties. You know, she may want sidewalks, but she lets the dogs run off those sidewalks. But, you know, they do that and I can't get out there and clean that up because there's just too much poop. So what am I supposed to do? I'm asking you.
I would direct you to the police department. I think that you should contact them, ask them if they have any pointers for you on enforcing the property and keeping people off of there.
Do you think they'll help me make her clean up the dog poop?
If it's your property, they may be able to enforce, they may be able to help you keep her off of there as well.
Fine, are you gonna give me more time to clean up that house? Because, I mean, it just needs a good paint job. You know, I can get, I'll tell you what. Instead of putting glass in those windows, I'll get that clear plastic, what do they call it?
Plexiglass?
Plexiglass, thank you. I'll put the Plexiglass in the windows and that way it'll be harder for them to break. And then I'll put up some, I'll paint it up and I've made arrangements with my cousin Neil out of Arkansas. He's going to rent me six of his goats and I'm gonna bring them in and they're gonna clean up that whole property as far as all the weeds and everything.
Well, I'd like to direct you to our code enforcement officer. If you would ask her if those things are allowed by the zoning ordinances, if they'd be allowed by the city, then I would encourage you to go ahead with any plans that you have to review the structure.
Young lady, are you gonna let me have my goats?
Uh, no. But I can work with you on it.
Okay, what can we put in there to let it eat those weeds? Horses? I know it, the cows or the chickens. They'll take care of it.
I can give you some time on mowing that.
Somebody better turn that off.
I believe your time's up.
How much time can I have?
Two months.
Three?
Your time is actually...
Okay. Thank you for your concern.
Thank you.
Are there any others who wish to speak?
Yes, Mayor. There is one other citizen who has signed up to speak. Would you approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, thank you for having me today. My name is Lauren Pearl. My address is 217 Clearwater Drive. I'm the neighbor to this structure. I wouldn't call it a house anymore. I have five kids, and this is a big safety hazard in our neighborhood. She talks about vagrants going in there and messing everything up, and it's a hazard for our kids, because, I mean, you can't watch them all the time, right? My kids get in there, they play, they're going to get hurt. And on top of that...
I found all the toys that they've left in the yard, too.
And on top of that, like, there's poison ivy growing everywhere, there's snakes and rats. I actually found two dead rats in my kid's swimming pool last summer because of this property. And she wants to talk about the dog poop. Well, the trees and the weeds are grown up in the fence to where I can't keep my dog in, so my dog gets in her yard and runs out. It's going to get hit by traffic because she can't maintain her side of the fence. And I just wanted to let you guys know what this is like to live next to. It's awful. And we just want it to be cleaned up, and we've contacted the property owner before, and she's just not interested in it. I mean, goats, come on. Like, a lawnmower would do great things here. So if you could just help us out and help our neighborhood look better and keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussions or question from the council?
I have a question for the financial director. Do you offhand know how much it would cost the city to tear down this property?
You talking about my house, now you picking my property too?
We're not sure at this time, but there are funds and budgets are being created for things such as this.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? All right, if there are no questions or discussion, do I hear a motion for 9C?
I move to approve the declaration of this property as a dilapidated structure and public nuisance.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Ms. Trout, I think you've already had your time to speak. We thank you for your consideration.
She gave me three months to get the yard mowed.
We will allow you your three months. After the three-month time period, if the structure has not been cleaned up, we will declare it a dilapidated structure. It may be torn down. May I have a roll call vote, please?
McKinney?
Yes.
Insmeager?
Yes.
Counsel, I respect what you guys are saying, but there has been a motion that was made that was not discussed on the agenda, and I think we need to table that or rephrase the motion. Maybe not... Not for additional time, but either go with the not a nuisance or full nuisance and have it torn down. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve 9C?
I motion to approve 9C.
I second that motion.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
McKinney?
Yes.
Insmeager?
Yes.
Darwicky?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes. In summary, the property will not be allowed three months. The property has been declared a dilapidated structure and will be torn down. 9C has been approved, and there are no other ordinances. Are there any remarks by the governing body?
I would like to thank the council for their support for the Youth City Council and all the effort they have put into this year to make the Youth City Council so great and successful.
Are there any remarks by the city manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to personally thank, and on behalf of everybody else, thank the city staff for their generosity during job shattering and the experience they were able to provide to us this year, and for Jennifer Hooks for putting this entire thing together, and for mentorship we have all enjoyed and learned from this experience greatly.
I would also like to thank the council for their support. They have taken time out of their days and put effort into this, and they've done it of their own free will. And we all appreciate it. We've all gained innumerable experiences that I think that none of us would trade, and we appreciate that. There is no executive session tonight, so we have one more motion. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
McKinney?
Yes.
Insmeager?
Yes.
Darwicky?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Good job, youth council. We're going to take a short break. If anybody wants to have pictures up front, we will do that with the youth. And in about 10 minutes, we want to invite everyone in the audience.